Alright, good afternoon. My name is Johnny Barton, I am the Chief Counsel for the Office of Open Government, and I want to take this opportunity to thank you for taking time to participate in today's Open Meeting Act Training. With us today also are Director Mikael Allen and Attorney Advisor Sherri Deebury. First, we're going to take an overview of the Office of Open Government, our statutory authorities, and then we'll get into the presentation proper as it relates to the law and public bodies' compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Next slide, please. The Open Meetings Act is found in DC Code Section 2-571 to 2-580. The regulations that govern the OMA are found in 3 DCR MR Section 10-400. Next slide, please. The mission of the Office of Open Government is to ensure that government operations at every level are transparent, open to the public, and promote civic engagement. Next slide, please. I guess I want to go back a little bit and give you a little bit of the... The Office of Open Government was established by statute in 2011. It was first staffed in 2013. Currently, we are a staff of four: Director Allen, myself, Attorney Advisor Sherri Deebury, and our IT Specialist Kevon Bridges. Next slide, please. We have statutory authority over two areas of the law. The first being FOIA, we provide non-binding advisory opinions on compliance with FOIA. We also assist members of the public with submitting a proper FOIA request, and we also assist public bodies in properly processing those requests by helping them to identify proper exemptions. Concerning the Office, concerning the Open Meetings Act, the Office has authority to enforce the OMA. It includes issuing binding advisory opinions, also taking enforcement action if necessary. We also provide advice to public bodies on complying with the OMA. We answer questions, and we pretty much are a go-to office for any questions or issues concerning the Open Meetings Act. What does the Open Meetings Act cover? It covers open meetings of public bodies. And by definition, a meeting consists of a gathering of a quorum of the members of a public body, where those members gather together to consider, conduct, or advise on public business. Public business includes gathering information, taking, discussing, deliberating, recommending, and voting. These meetings may be held in person, by telephone conference, video conference, or by other electronic means of communication. And as we all are aware, currently we are in a pandemic, so all meetings are being held remotely by electronic means. Next slide, please. A meeting is not a chance or social gathering where no business, no public business is discussed, or a press conference. If by chance, in this near the holiday time, a what would constitute a quorum of your particular public body winds up at the Costco at the same time, you're in the same line, you're discussing your holiday plans, that would not constitute a meeting. It's a chance gathering, and as long as no public business is discussed, it is not a quorum subject to the Open Meetings Act. A press conference is also not considered a open meeting. And please note, if there is no quorum, then the public body cannot conduct a public meeting. Next slide, please. Under the OMA, a public body's meeting must be open to the public unless the OMA permits closure. A meeting is considered open to the public if the public is permitted to be physically present, if the news media is permitted to be physically present, or if the meeting is televised. Under the public health emergency and legislation enacted to allow for meetings to occur, a public body has to allow the public to be present remotely, make its best efforts to allow the public access to the meeting. If for reasons of technology failure, the public is not able to attend, it is not a violation under the Open Meetings Act during the public health emergency. Next slide, please. These are also not meetings. Emails exchanged between members of a public body. There's a specific provision in the OMA that excludes email exchanges between members of the public body as a meeting. Also, subcommittee meetings. Some public bodies utilize a subcommittee, which is a smaller breakdancing for the purposes of gathering information. When that subcommittee does not consist of a quorum, it does not take official action. It merely gathers information and brings that information back to the subcommittee. That subcommittee meeting is not considered a meeting of the public body subject to the OMA. However, there have been instances where subcommittees have constituted a quorum, and those public bodies have, in fact, opened those meetings to the public and followed all the notice requirements and the recording requirements. So long as there's not an attempt to invade the OMA email exchanges between members of a public body and subcommittee meetings are not subject to the Open Meetings Act. Next slide, please. These are the public bodies that are subject to the OMA. The Government Council, including the DC City Council, boards, commissions, or similar entities. Similar entities in this particular instance. One particular example are local school advisory teams. Now, the Board of Trustees of Public Charter Schools, boards that supervise or controls an agency, and an advisory board that takes official action by vote of its members convened for such purpose. Next slide, please. These are specifically excluded from the OMA courts, the mayor's cabinet, professional or administrative staff of public bodies when they're gathered outside the presence of a quorum and advisory neighborhood commissioners who are subject to additional meeting laws that govern how they conduct their meetings. Next slide, please. Notice. In order for a meeting to occur under the OMA, the public must be giving requisite notice of the meeting. The public has a right to attend, and of course, the only way the public knows when a meeting occurs is if a proper notice is given. Next slide, please. And again, because we are conducting public business, we want the public to attend. We also want that input if that's allowed by law or regulation or bylaws. And we also want them to witness the meeting that is occurring so that they're aware of what is happening, in particular with the public charter school that they have an interest in. Under the OMA, a public body should give as much notice as possible. However, on the short end, notice must be given 48 hours or two business days before each meeting, whichever is greater in time. We always recommend that a public body give as much notice as possible. That is, in the event that there is an issue with the notice, there will be sufficient time to cure it so that a public body can, in fact, meet. If a public body has not given the requisite notice, a public body cannot meet under the OMA. There are some specific requirements concerning how notice must be given. Notice must be physically posted in the office of the public body or a place readily accessible to the public. However, right now, we're in a pandemic, and that particular division is being waived. Notice must be posted on the website of the public body or of the District of Columbia. And upcoming meetings and an annual schedule of meetings of public bodies must be published in the DC Register, except for meetings of trustees of public charter schools. So trustees of public charter schools do not have to publish their meetings in the DC Register. However, they must publish that notice on their website, and that's particularly important now because that would be the only notice that the public has since physical posting requirements are told during the public health emergency. And all those forms of notice must be given 48 hours or two business days before the meeting occurs, whichever is greater. Next slide, please. And again, during the existence of the public health emergency, all meetings are remote, and the physical posting requirement is waived until such a time that the public health emergency is no longer in effect. Next slide, please. Now, the notice has to contain certain information, and that information is relevant so that the public has the proper information so that they may attend the meeting. The notice must include the time, date, location, and proposed meeting agenda. If a public body is going to go into a closed or executive session, that notice must also include the OMA citation that authorizes the closure and state the reason justifying the closure. And we'll get into that in a little more detail as we continue on. Next slide, please. This is also a requirement for the agenda, all agendas. This information, this language must appear at the end of all agendas. This meeting is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government, and it has our office email address. And this is for the purpose of allowing you all to conduct your meetings without having to answer questions concerning the Open Meetings Act, and also to give the public notice that the Office of Open Government exists so that they can formulate and send their questions to us for response and so that you all can conduct your meetings without being hindered in that way by questions concerning the Open Meetings Act. Next slide, please. In order to enter into a closed or an executive session on your agenda, your notice, your agenda, you must state the reason for entering to that closed session and the citation from DC Code Section 2-575B. And there are now, I believe, 16 reasons for entering into a closed and executive session, two of which are particularly germane and specifically carved out for trustees of public charter schools. And I'll start with those first. Matters involving students' personal identifying information. If there's going to be a discussion that may involve students' personal identifying information, names, birthdates, addresses, social security numbers, and the like, you may go into a closed or executive session to discuss those matters. Also, where there are evaluations by an eligible chartering authority, a Board of Trustees of a public charter school may go into a closed or an executive session. However, the law is clear that this does not permit the Board of Trustees to close a meeting that would otherwise be open merely because the staff of an eligible charter authority is participating. It has to be for the purpose of being evaluated by the eligible charter authority. The other reasons are by court order or statute, certain contract negotiations, attorney-client privilege, and that does not mean simply because an attorney is present, but that attorney has to be giving legal advice to its client, which would be the public charter school Board of Trustees, and that eventually may go into a closed session. Trade secrets, testing and grading, personnel matters, again, for the same reason as matters involving students' personal identifying information. It's personal, and that should be kept confidential and in a closed session. Evaluating, again, evaluations by public, by eligible chartering authorities, certain trainings, collective bargaining negotiations, administering, preparing or grading tests, public safety reasons, certain deliberations, and to protect investigations that are ongoing. Next slide, please. There's a protocol for entering into a closed or executive session, and what we recommend is that you prepare a script. The Office of Open Government is happy to assist you with preparing the script so that you make sure that you properly enter into the session and follow all the requirements of the OMA to enter into a closed or an executive session. The protocol for entering a closed executive session is as follows. First of all, you have to open the meeting and establish the presence of a quorum. A motion must be made to enter into the closed session. That motion must be second. The presiding officer is going to publicly state for the people present the reason for going into closure. He or she is going to reference the OMA citation that authorizes the justification. So in particular, regarding public charter school Board of Trustees, we are going into a closed executive session to discuss matters involving personal identifying information of students. And that's sufficient. Again, no names of students should appear on the agenda, nothing to identify the student, the language just generally stating why, and the citation to the DC Code. A roll call vote is taken, and if the motion passes, you may enter into the closed or the executive session. Now, the closed executive session, under the OMA as currently interpreted, is not a standalone meeting. It is always held in conjunction with an open session at which the public is invited to attend. And again, it would take place after you dispense of any matters that are appropriate for consideration in a open session. Next slide, please. Once you are in a closed session, even though there are matters which are appropriate for discussion in a closed session, you may not discuss those matters unless those matters were referenced in the draft meeting agenda. Even though it's permissible to discuss personnel matters, attorney-client privilege, unless those matters have been previously noted to the public, you can only discuss enclosure, those matters that were previously noticed, even though it would be appropriate under normal circumstances to discuss those matters. So it has to be noticed to be discussed in a closed session, even though it's appropriate to be discussed in a closed session. You are to always record what is discussed in the executive or the closed session. You then reopen the public meeting, and when appropriate, report publicly any official action taken in closure and adjourn the meeting. Next slide, please. There are certain record-keeping requirements under the OMA. The OMA requires all meetings, whether they are in open or closed session, to be recorded by electronic means. By electronic means, we mean an audio tape, audio recording, a video recording, or any other means, a tape recorder, any means by which that meeting, both open and closed sessions, can be recorded. And again, the recording should be separate, one for the open session and one for the closed session, reason being that the audio for the open session should be made available to the public. The recording of the closed session is not to be made publicly available, so you want to make sure that there's a means by which those two recordings... A meeting can also be recorded by transcript. And what we mean by transcript, a official court-like sonographer who may actually take verbatim, word-for-word, what occurs during the meeting. But prior to publishing or posting those meetings, we ask that you confer with the vendor to ensure that no copyright restrictions impede the public dissemination of those meetings. Also, by detailed meeting minutes. Now, it's not all of these. For instance, it's not audio and video, it's an either-or. It's not transcript and audio and video, it's an either-or. So it's not that the public body has to do all of these. But all meetings have to be recorded by electronic means. It doesn't mean that electronic means has to be the means of recording a meeting in conjunction with another form. You may also take detailed meeting minutes. And by detailed meeting minutes, we mean that the minutes are clear enough and exact enough so that someone who was not at the meeting is able to look at those detailed meeting minutes and understand exactly what took place. It should include, you know, who voted, what the vote was about, of course, who was present, and pretty much recite as detailed as possible what took place during the actual meeting. And if someone was to look at that detailed meeting minutes a week after, they would be able to understand what took place. So it should be very clear when detailed meeting minutes are taken. Next slide, please. However, we are in a pandemic. The publication requirements during the public health emergency are waived. So even though a public body has to still record its meeting by electronic means or, and if it chooses to use a transcript or detailed meeting minutes, the requirement that those be published according to the timetable that we will look at soon has been waived during the public health emergency. However, the OOG suggests, in the spirit of transparency and openness, that you publish the meeting records as soon as practicable. Next slide, please. As upon by the OOG, draft detailed meeting minutes must be publicly available no later than three business days after the meeting. In reference to trustees of a public charter school meetings, those detailed meeting minutes or draft meeting minutes have to be published 30 days, within 30 business days after the meeting occurs. We are well aware that the draft meeting minutes will not be approved until the subsequent meeting. However, by posting the draft meeting minutes, and they should contain a disclaimer draft, the public will be aware of what took place during the meeting. And of course, after those meetings are subsequently approved at the next regularly scheduled meeting of a public body, then they will become the final meeting minutes. So for Board of Trustees of Public Charter Schools, 30 business days after the meeting occurs, you are to post your draft meeting minutes. Again, with a disclaimer that across the top that it is a draft and that they are subject to approval and that they will be approved at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Concerning audio recordings, video recordings, and transcripts, the OMA requires that these be published no later than seven business days after the meeting. But again, during the public health emergency, these specific periods are told. But the OOG does ask, in the spirit of transparency, that you do make publicly available either the detailed meeting minutes or the recordings as soon as practical. Next slide, please. Record maintenance. It is important that public bodies maintain the records of their meetings for a requisite period of time. Under the OMA, DC Official Code 2-5788 requires preservation of the meeting records for a minimum of five years. 3 DCR MR Section 10-409.8 requires compliance with the District's Record Preservation Law and concerning the disposition of electronic meeting minutes, meeting recordings, and written meeting minutes. Next slide, please. There's certain other requirements under the OMA. One of the questions that we have, that we come across pretty regularly is, does the public have a right to comment? And that's a yes or a no question. Yes, if the enabling legislative... Yes, if the enabling legislation of the public body authorizes a period of public comment. Or also, if the public body, if the board of trustees of a public charter school would like to provide a, a period of public comment, they may do so absent a statutory requirement to do so. If their bylaws require it, or, or, or they decide, they decide that that's a policy that they want to allow, they may do so. However, a public body retains the right to regulate the time allotted and the duration of public comments if they choose to allow them, unless this requirement is already spelled out in the enabling legislation for the bylaws. So, you do not have, you do not have to allow the public to comment. Again, the Office of Open Government encourages a period of public comment, but you do not have to do so unless you are required by law or by regulation or by bylaws to do so. And if you do do it, you are, you absolutely have the right to, to remain, to retain your form and to put down, you know, rules and regulations as to how long the speaker or speakers have and, and the like. Next slide, please. Parliamentary procedure. A public body may conduct public meetings using the latest edition of Robert's Rules of Order. The Director of the Office of Open Government, Director Allen, may provide advice and training on parliamentary procedure. So, if this is something that your public body or board of trustees wants to, to, to follow, the latest edition of Robert's Rules of Order, and instruction is needed on, on how to, to follow those rules and the rules of parliamentary procedure, please contact the office and we will make that available to you all. Next slide, please. How to cancel a meeting? A meeting is, a meeting cancellation is a change in schedule. In most instances, the requirement is as much notice as possible, but not less than forty-eight hours or two business days, whichever is greater before the meeting is to occur. We are well aware that in some instances, circumstances may dictate that less than forty-eight hours or two business days is available to, to notify the public of a cancellation, a snowstorm, a freak snowstorm, or some other pressing emergency that happens at the eleventh hour. We then require that you give the public as much notice as possible that the meeting is not going to take place. On your website, to, to preserve the record as to what took, took place so that people are aware that no meeting took place, you're going to put canceled by that meeting so that people are aware that it didn't take place and it establishes a record so that in the future, when people are trying to figure out when that public body met or did not meet, it can see that that meeting did not occur because it was canceled. Next slide, please. Can we hold an electronic meeting? Absolutely. And a meeting can be held electronically if the, if more, if one or more members have to participate outside of the meeting and have to call in or video conference in, even if there are, you know, a, three or four other members who are actually, when the pandemic is over, is actually meeting in public. So, you can have one or more member, members, you know, as many members as necessary participate in electronic meeting right now. All meetings are held by electronic means, but if there were no pandemic, yes, you can hold a meeting with members participating electronically, even if some members are physically at the, at the location. The O M A requires that reasonable arrangements are made to accommodate the public's right to attend the meeting. And what this means is, if the entire meeting is to be held in electronic means as, as now is, that there's a call-in number or other means for the public to access the meeting. Again, during the pandemic, if there is a technological issue presenting, preventing the public from attending the meeting, it's not a violation of the O M A as long as the public body made its best and good faith efforts to allow it to occur. We all know that things happen, and we've had meetings where we've had some, 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 some technological difficulties. The meeting, the meeting has to be recorded, and all votes are to be taken by roll call. And all other provisions of the O M A must be adhered to, i.e. the notice provisions and the recording provisions as well. Next slide, please. Can we hold an emergency meeting? Absolutely. And it may become necessary for a public charter school to, board of trustees to hold an emergency meeting. There are some requirements, however, that must be met. The forty-eight hour or two business day rule does not apply to emergency meetings. However, notice must be given to the public. At the same time, notice is given to the members. And again, those methods have to be, the same notice requirements have to be met, publication on the website. And if we were not in the pandemic, the physical posting at the location where the board of trustees will be meeting. The presiding officer at the beginning of the meeting is going to provide a statement explaining the subject matter of the meeting, the nature of the emergency, and explain how the public was provided with notice. And again, if you are, if, if it does come up that you have to have a emergency, an emergency meeting, and you need some help with putting together the script or to ensure that your, your agenda and the like is complies with the O M A, we are happy to, to assist you with that. Just give us a call or shoot us an email, and we're happy to, to help. Next slide, please. Periodically, we do receive complaints. At this time, we are very much more so interested in getting the board of trustees of all the public charter schools up to speed. And that's our focus. Our focus is on getting you up to speed and getting you in compliance with the O M A. And we know it's a, a learning process, so we're going to be walking together with this. And there won't be a lot of emphasis on complaints. However, we do want you all to be aware of the complaint process and how that transpires. Next slide, please. And a agreed party, including anonymous parties, may complain to the Office of Open Government for relief if a meeting may have been conducted in violation of the O M A. Sometimes, it's simply, some, some complaints are legitimate and require some form of follow-up. By follow-up, we mean, we may have to, the director may opt to go into a conciliation with the parties to see if it can be resolved. Some complaints, maybe a misunderstanding. Someone looked in the wrong place for the notice and didn't see it. It was there. And, and, you know, doesn't have any, any real merit. So, not all complaints are legitimate, but we do look at them and go through a process of, of resolution, of, of trying to resolve them. Complaints may refer to past meetings or prospective meetings. They may be submitted in writing, in person, online, by mail, or email. In the event, once we are clear of the, the current status where everybody is all aboard and, and the directive deems it's, it's time. If a public body, if a complaint is made against a public body, you will get a, against a charter, a board of trustees of public charter school, you will get a written notification from the Office of Open Government that contains a copy of the complaint. And we will give you a opportunity to respond back to it. And again, in some instances, your response may cause the complaint to, to be dismissed simply because it's something that the person misunderstood that was clearly available, such as a, an agenda. And once you respond back, if the complaint does not warrant dismissal, the O O G, the director, may deem to have a conciliatory meeting with the parties to see if it may be resolved. If it cannot be resolved, we may issue a advisory opinion. And the purpose of the advisory opinion is not to embarrass or to humiliate any public body. It is to instruct that public body and other public bodies and the public as well as to the proper steps to, that should have been taken or should be taken in the future to comply with the Open Meetings Act. An agreed party may appeal, an agreed party may appeal to the Board of Executive and Government Accountability for reconsideration of an O M A opinion issued by the O O G Director. The Director may issue a complaint, as we call it, suisprante. If a public body is agreed by it, they may appeal to the Beggar Board for, for reconsideration. And individuals who may, may do so, they, they may be issued in response to a public body official or employee's request for an advice or, again, when it is issued suisprante without outside prompting. Next slide, please. At the end of this, the training is a Open Meetings Act summary, and I'm not going to go through it. We can go to the slide, but it gives a, a, a kind of, I call it the quick and dirty of what the O O G, what the Open Meeting Act entails. And I believe it's there at the end. You can go to the next slide, please. Okay, it's not at the end, but I, I need to add it back in. Technological difficulties on my part. Here are contacts, contact information, again, our director, Nikell Allen, and the information where you may, the contact information where you may reach her, myself, and Cherie Debury, and also our I T specialist, Mr. Kavon Bridges. So, at this time, I want to thank you again for, for joining our meeting. And we are happy to take any questions that you may have.
Johnny, I see one question in the chat, and it says, "Does the reason for closure need to be on the meeting notice forty-eight hours in advance?"
Unless, unless it's an emergency meeting, it should be, it should be stated on the, the meeting notice and the agenda at least forty-eight hours, three business days before the meeting occurs. So, yeah.
That's, that's the only question that I see in the chat or the Q and A.
Okay. Again, if there are some questions that you have after this meeting, and Director Allen can correct me for the date. I believe we have another meeting dealing specifically with questions and answers that's going to take place on December ninth, December ninth. So, if you have any questions, after, you know, considering the presentation or looking at the law, we'll have another training on December ninth specifically to answer questions and provide answers to those questions. Again, we want to thank you so much for, for participating, and we appreciate it. And again, feel free to contact us in the interim. If you do have some questions or concerns, we do our best to, to give you a, a response as early as possible. So, thank you so much, and Director Allen. We thank you for wearing so many hats today. Not only is she the Director of the Office of Open Government, but the day she has served dutifully as a I T person. I can't speak for Cherie, but I'm very low T, so we have to rely on the Director today. And as always, she's done a wonderful job and did not disappoint. So, thank you so much, Director Allen. And thank you, Cherie, for also participating and monitoring the chat log. So, we'll end the meeting with that, and we hope you all have a wonderful day. And please enjoy your holiday period coming up. And that's if we don't see you on December ninth. Thanks again. Bye-bye.